Good evening. Welcome to the Livingston County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is September 12th at 6:00 PM. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask that you join us in a moment of silent reflection before we get going. Thank you, and if you'd join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Reader is absent. Commissioner Naka Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman is absent. Commissioner Dric.
Here.
Commissioners Ajax.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Item number five on the agenda is correspondence. This evening, we have three pieces of correspondence, two from Muskegon County and one from Van Buren County. So I'm looking for a resolution to receive the correspondence in place on file.
So moved Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Plank. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's see, item number six is our first call to the public. We have two call of publics in full board meetings. The first call to the public is citizens will have three minutes to present information. The second one, they'll have five. If you wanted to speak, it called the pub or two. Yeah. Mental lapse. So the, anyway, if you wanted to speak, you should have filled out a card and given it to our clerk this evening. So I ask Clerk Conley if she has any cards.
Yes, we do. Lisa Riz Marnowich from Hamburg Township. Okay, at the second call to the public. Jason Ringette from Brighton Township.
Yeah, I would mention to you that I'll say, when you have 15 seconds left, I'll say as diplomatically as I can, you have 15 seconds, and then I have a timer and the buzzer goes off, your time is up.
Because rebellion, the Bible says, Second Corinthians 3, their minds were blinded. Second Corinthians 4 says, "The God of this world has blinded the minds of the unbelievers. There's a veil, there's a blindness over the minds of the leaders and the politicians." The Bible teaches Jesus Christ. He said, "You shall know the truth, and the truth shall set you free." Outside of Christ, there's no ultimate truth. Public schools went rogue in the school year 21, 22, violating our children's U.S. constitutional rights, violating their rights under the First, Fourth, Ninth, and Fourteenth Amendments, the Guarantee Clause, the federal statutes, regulations, civil rights, state laws, federal laws, and their due process to public education, as well as forcing illegal mask mandates and healthy quarantines in Livingston County schools. In April 2021, the state emergency mandate stopped in Michigan. How much further has Livingston County school kids fallen behind in education due to the reckless, illegal, healthy quarantines and mask mandates that the Health Department and school superintendents imposed on our children with no peer-reviewed replicated studies to back up the reckless actions to show that masks and healthy quarantines work? The Health Department pushed the recommendation mandates and guidelines onto the schools, pushing our children to wear masks and healthy quarantines. They have caused suffering, depression, isolation, physical, psychological, sociological harm to our children, imposed pain, suffering, humiliation on students, inhabited their speech, damaged their health. The people who did this to our children need to be held accountable for their actions. There are currently 167 studies mixed with peer-reviewed replicated studies that masks do not work, nor do they stop the COVID transmission. A new observational study, the Forgan Effect Mechanism, by which face masks contributes to COVID-19 fatality rate, was published in Medicine in February 2022 by Dr. Forgan. The paper analyzed wearing face masks has caused more than 50% of deaths, 50% higher deaths, forcing people to wear masks compared to no mask mandates. Livingston County Board of Commissioners, our kids should never have to repeat the hell that they went through with the COVID protocols that were imposed on them through the year 21, 22 school year in Livingston County schools. Please hire a true doctor that follows science, peer-reviewed, replicated scientific studies and common sense for any future alleged outbreaks to be the head of the Livingston County Health Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ballard, Brighton Township.
Hello. Regarding item 10 on tonight's agenda, the reports with Anna Pinella, I'm familiar with issues such as this that occurred during the past two and a half years here in our county. Last month, I met with Sheriff Murphy on these issues. Similar to what you're going to hear today in the report, the sheriff agreed with me on several things. First, when you hear the report, please ask yourself, why was nothing done to the people in our government who were breaking laws? I know you, the board, are aware of the laws that were broken because the community here has been telling you for over two years. Second, as you listen to the report, please ask yourself, why did the Health Department ignore and not follow the laws and purposely break the law? This brings me to my meeting with the sheriff last month, and what I'm about to say is not confidential. As Sheriff Murphy has told me, I do not need permission from him to share because, and I'll quote, "He has said he is an open book." The answer why the Health Department ignored and broke the law is because the Health Department Director Officer wanted the money for the department, and it was for the Director Officer's personal benefit. Are you hearing me? It was for the money and personal benefit that people, parents, children, businesses were purposefully denied their constitutional and statutory protections and rights, and in some instances outright abused. Please understand, the sheriff agreed with me. There was coercion by government officials and the Health Department. Also, the sheriff told me the Health Department refused his help in order to follow the law. This means the Health Department Director Officer chose to break the law. I'll repeat that. The Health Department Director chose to break the law. Lastly, I want to say a huge thank you to the author of the report and the presenter, as well as to the board chairman, for their courage and their willingness to shine the light on what was really happening here over the past two and a half years. Thank you.
Just a point of order, the clapping, and I would appreciate if that, would refrain from that or any applause. It will make the meeting go smoother. Thank you. Clerk Conley.
Mark Fosdick, Cohocta.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mark Fosdick. I'm Cohocta Township Supervisor, and I'm here to talk about Resolution 09135, authorizing fiber optic planning and consulting services to move forward within Livingston County Fiber Optic Professional Service Project with Merit Network and Triple R Consulting to further investigate the feasibility and cost of a Livingston County fiber optic for public safety, education, and municipal open areas at a cost of $150,000. As I understand it, most of these institutions already have fiber optic, you know, at their locations, with the exception of Unidilla, and there is something that should be done in regard to that. As I read this resolution, it sounds like the county is moving forward with its trunk line, where you're going to be providing the internet service and maintaining that line. You've heard presentations from the supervisors before in regards to our working with some sort of a grant program where we can serve unserved and unserved and underserved areas within the county. The fiber internet companies that are willing to work with us are willing to invest their own individual, you know, money to make this project work, and the cost would be around $10 million to do this. So we're, it's my position tonight that you guys should turn down this resolution, and what you should do is come up with a strategy for the whole broadband internet because you're doing it sort of in peace work here. And I think for the investment, you can get a lot more done in terms of broadband for the unserved and underserved areas within the county. And that would probably be one of the most single important things that you can do for the residents in Livingston County. And then just briefly, when I'm looking at the Triple R Consulting with the E-Rate Access for Fiber Services funding, as I understand this, this is an FCC program known as the E-Rate that's designed to help schools and libraries with high-speed internet access. Often, schools and libraries cannot meet their educational support needs due to budgeting constraints. I understand the E-Rate process is complicated, and there probably would need to be help in moving through that process. As I understand it, the schools of Livingston County.
You have 10 seconds.
Have access to fiber internet, and they would like to have a redundancy. So it sounds like you're working towards providing a redundancy, yet we have thousands of unserved and underserved areas within the county that need to be hooked up to fiber internet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Wright, Handy Township.
As part of the federal government's desire to increase inflation, you've got ARPA money to spend. Now, you plan to spend some of that internet, and I think that's a mistake. Eight supervisors in this county, half of the supervisors, have already told you that this is a bad plan, and it really is. This doesn't connect anybody to internet. All it does is create infrastructure that may or may not be used. Now, if I was a service provider and I wanted to hook up people and have customers, I don't think I'd rely on Livingston County to provide me with the backbone internet. I'd want to provide it myself. And the reason I say that is because look how long it's taken to do absolutely nothing replacing the current health or the previous health director. I wouldn't want to run a company and rely on responses like that. It's just crazy. And you have to admit that it's crazy. So don't spend $150,000 for nothing. I'd rather you see that money go back to the taxpayers if possible. I think you'd be much better off spending that money using it to find a headhunter, to find a health director. $150,000 is a lot more money than $10,000 or $20,000. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
Randy Clausen, Howell.
I'm Randy Clausen, and I'm from Howell. I've been here for two years now, and I became very interested in what was happening in this community when volunteers from our church started working with the people that were disabled or people that were challenged, and they didn't have public transportation to get them to and from work. Since then, I hear that there's also many businesses are now reporting that they do not have enough employees, and part of the reason has been identified is that the employees lack transportation. Well, you know, we all just turned the key and got in our cars and came here today, but there's a lot of people that can't do that. But you, as Commissioners, have a big, important part of seeing that that obstacle is lifted by the choices that you make. I'm working with a group at my church at Brighton United Methodist Church, and we take seriously the fact that we are supposed to help those less fortunate or the people who are disadvantaged, and that is my Christian tradition, and it's the tradition of many religions, and I'm sure that is a tradition of many of you sitting there, but we don't have the disadvantage sitting here and clapping or cheering because they can't get here. But so I just ask you not to forget them, not to forget the public transportation needs in Livingston County. And getting older, the population of the elderly is expanding, and so I probably won't be able to drive myself places in 10 years from now, but I would want to still get out and about. And so I think that y'all have probably friends or parents that are going to be in that same situation, and so those are part of your sacred charge, is to see that the structure for public transportation is in place, and you hold the key for that. So I just ask you to remember that as you make choices that will help people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Coomer from Heartland.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Pam Coomer. I'm from the same church as Randy, First United Methodist Church of Brighton, and I'm the co-chair of the Economic Justice Community, which is a subcommittee of the Church and Society. I want to thank you all for all that you do to make Livingston County a great place to live. I've lived here for 20 years. I've enjoyed every minute. However, I do realize that while we are one of the wealthiest counties per capita income in Michigan, a significant percentage of residents in our county struggle to make ends meet. Our committee is hosting an informative meeting on September 20th at 7:00 at the First United Methodist Church of Brighton. The public is invited. The presenters will be from Livingston County United Way and the Human Services Collaborative Body. They will share information about the status and scope of poverty in our county. I've sent already all of you twice, I believe, invitations to our meeting, as well as the Zoom link, if you would like to join us. We believe that together, we can make Livingston County even better for all. Again, that's September 20th at 7:00 at First United Methodist Church. Hope to see you there, and you'll probably receive one more invite from me before then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleen Quinn from Genoa.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me have a couple minutes of your time. I wanted to speak about the health officer position, as I have previously. Given the significance of this position and the power that the Michigan law affords to the county health office during emergency events such as the COVID pandemic, this process requires more rigor than the health office resolution currently outlines, which involves a mere 30-day posting for hire. This position calls for an extensive and comprehensive search by an outside firm. I'm sure many in this room would agree that the magnitude of this position warrants the additional cost. As a human resources professional of 37 years, I will tell you again that in this situation, every successful organization would implement both an internal and an external search for qualified candidates. The extra time and money spent in a comprehensive search by an outside recruitment firm would be an investment in the county health department because, first of all, even if your internal candidate is ultimately chosen, the external search will yield your backfill candidates. Also, the external search would bring along a medical doctor to take on this position, eliminating the expense of the current shared part-time medical directory salary, a savings of over $100,000 per year. This would potentially be a great return on your investment of $21,000. The ideal candidate for a health officer would be a medical doctor or nurse with a bachelor's degree. A master's degree in public health would be ideal, but not completely necessary based on the state of Michigan's provisional approval of Mr. Matt Boland. Considering the health officer's responsibilities to manage infectious outbreaks, it would be a huge asset for the candidate to possess hospital experience, someone who has been in the trenches, particularly during the pandemic. Such a candidate would be in a much better position to analyze biostatistics and draw on their hospital experience to determine if mandates coming down from the MDHHS are reasonable. Someone with medical experience and discernment and a personal backbone would enable them to stand up, speak out, and push back against mandates and poor health policy based on non-scientific or skewed medical data or even an agenda. The disastrous directives from our leading health organizations highlight the necessity of hiring the most qualified and medically discerning person we can possibly find. So we would just like to encourage you to proceed and wrap up the search, actually. Thank you.
Janine Eyre from Genoa.
Sorry, I didn't have time to print my document. Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your service. My name is Janine. I'm in, I live in the Genoa Township. We are here to address our position concerning the selection process of Livingston County's next health officer. There were primarily two categories of victims of the health policy that was rubber stamped by, unfortunately, by our health department. And of course, we, 2020 is, I mean, hindsight is 2020, but it happened, and there were primarily two categories of victims of the health policy. Businesses, the Health Department was active in investigating and reporting businesses that were not enforcing the state mask policy. This threatened their license to operate and the livelihood of these Livingston County business owners. And then there was children. The Health Department aided school districts in enforcing the quarantining or exclusion of healthy children, excluding them from children, from school and extracurricular activities and events, just because they could have been exposed to COVID. Parents received calls and emails from the Health Department commanding them to keep their kids out of school and society, just because they may have been exposed to COVID. This caused children to suffer academically, socially, mentally, physically, and emotionally. Younger children faced difficulties in language learning because they could not see the mouth of their masked teachers. At times, young athletes were forced to mask while participating in their sport. This shows just how consequential this decision of yours is. Livingston County residents and children suffered because of the Health Department's rubber stamping of CDC and MDHHS policy recommendations. The statutory authority of the health officer warrants a rigorous and exhaustive search for the, for a uniquely qualified individual, and it would be a dereliction of duty for this board not to cast a wide net for a highly qualified pool of candidates. U.S. Commissioners are each elected to represent your citizens, not represent your own sentiments. Every single citizen at the last Board of Commissioners meeting wanted this board to vote yes on Commissioner Helserman's amendment to the health officer hiring process to include an outside personnel search, and I have an idea that the people here, most of the people here, feel the same way. I'm looking forward to hearing Anna Pinella's presentation. This is an account that must be heard. Every county employee, elected and unelected, especially health, the Health Department needs to hear it and face the facts that this department actually acted unlawfully towards residents and children of Livingston. And hiring a health officer that is qualified is the next step to preventing it, a wide net. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Conley, Green Oak.
You got 10 seconds.
No. Good evening, Board. We'll start the clock. So I'm going to turn in this copy for permanent record when I'm done. So if I run out of time, you'll have it. Prior to retirement, Diane McCormick, Livingston County Health Director, had conversations with me, John Conley, on the phone regarding the required quarantine of students in Livingston County. We also had conversations regarding the recommended vaccination of students' population as citizens of Livingston County, as well as conversations regarding the legal responsibilities to follow our state laws regarding ordering quarantine of citizens without representation of the court system and the legal rights to refuse quarantining by the citizens. One of her responses, which is very important, and these are firsthand responses, these aren't second, one of her responses to me directly is that she is not going to be arrested like Governor Snyder, so she's going to do what the state told her to do. That's a quote. Another response she made was that there was just under 200,000 residents in Livingston County. She said that the 25,000 or so youth are not her priority and that her priority was the majority, and she made that, those decisions she made for the majority. That's a quote. You can ask her. These words may not be exact, but they're close to my recollection, as I can remember, because these were not recorded on my end. When I visited the Health Department in Howell, I noticed that they had a quarantine station set up. I took a picture of it. Diane called me on a Saturday. She was concerned because the picture included one of her employees, and she asked me to erase the picture. So as a professional courtesy, I did. Is it apparently made an employee uncomfortable? I did it. So I did it by her request. Later, I had a copy of a court order from Sheboygan District Court delivered to her office regarding the quarantine of students in a public school system. Court determined that it was not legal in Sheboygan County to mandate quarantine of students, which common sense would apply, that any county in the state wouldn't be legal either. On Thursdays every week, Diane held secret meetings with the superintendents of all school systems in Livingston County. Elected school board and county commissioners were not invited to these meetings. Later on, they might have been, but they weren't then. Gave, gave direction on how to handle the pandemic issues. She also said that she met with 40-plus health departments across the state of Michigan, and they worked together to organize and implement the plan she enacted in Livingston County. This was across the state. At a regular board meeting for the Brighton area schools, I asked my superintendent if the Livingston County Health Department was making us follow their direction, and he said yes. Shortly before retirement, Diane McCormick made a public statement before the Board of Commissioners that she hadn't made any health orders.
Yeah, 15 seconds.
To Livingston County, and she said she hadn't given any public health orders to the public school system. I'll finish with this. Today, a mom by the name of Anna Pinella, who has four children in Brighton area schools, will be presenting a statement of what her family went through during the COVID time and the facts surrounding it. And I read her statements. I believe them to be 100% accurate. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
This copy will be available.
I don't have any further cards for this call to the public.
All right, we will close the call to the public here in the room and then go to the call to the public in Zoom. I see four people with their hands raised. So we'll start with Lori Cowan. If you give your full name and location, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Lori Cowan. I'm from Unidilla Township, and I'm just very disappointed to see that with Resolution 135, you've decided to go with a middle-mile fiber optic that will only benefit schools, public safety, and municipalities, which the majority of them are already connected to, and you've ignored the desire of all the township supervisors' requests, which I support, to instead allocate money to each township so that they can contract with an internet company that they think would best serve their community. That's the best plan to go with, and it's just unfortunate that you don't see that, and to me, it's a waste of money. So I hope you all reconsider it and vote no on it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Mr. Leo Hanafin. If you give your name and location, you'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Leo Hanafin. I'm from Brighton Township. I want to thank Commissioner Helserman for reading the book on the history of race relations in our county that I gave to all the Commissioners a few meetings ago and for recommending it as a, quote, "good read." I agree with much of what he said in the last couple of board meetings. Racism is a cancer in our society that has been with us for generations and one that we all must work to eliminate and one that will be difficult to eliminate. Those are all things he said, and I agree completely. However, Commissioner Helserman also criticized my book for not reporting that the KKK was an arm of the Democratic Party in the South. As the title indicates on this book, it is about Livingston County. As the title indicates on this book, it is about Livingston County, not about the South. That being said, the Democratic Power Party of the distant past supported racist policies and practices. However, if we listen to politicians, we can often hear things that they say that are surprising. Here's a candidate for Senate in 1858. "I am not, nor have ever been, in favor of bringing about in any way the social and political equity, equality of black and white races, nor have ever been in favor of making them voters or jurors of Negroes, nor qualifying them to hold office. There's a physical difference between the black and white races that will however forbid, will forever forbid the two races from living together in terms of social and political equality." That's a quote from a speech given by Abraham Lincoln. Seven years later, he issued the Emancipation Proclamation and freed all black people in this country. So I don't think there's much to be gained from our quoting political figures and throwing parties around, because as, as Commissioner Helsnerman said, racism is a cancer, and the best way to eradicate a cancer is for us to work together to eliminate it. So let's move forward together, do what we can to actively and proactively oppose racism. That is indeed affecting our, our community and our nation by first accepting both the good and bad of our history and then identifying racism in all its forms in our systems and in our hearts so that we can eliminate them. Thank you.
Thank you. I see more people have raised their hands, and I'm just going to let you know that the last person that raised their hand, Ann Elise, is going to be the last person that I call on for Call the Public. Raising your hand, I'm going to equate to the same thing as sending in a card. So when you, at the beginning of the meeting here in the room, you're asked to fill out a card. And so I'm just letting people know ahead of time, Ann Elise will be the last person. Bill Grubb, if you give us your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, good evening, Commissioners. Bill Grubb, Conway Township Supervisor. I appreciate your service. I know it's a difficult thing. I share that, but I would like to state my concern with the Resolution 09-135. I agree with the Commissioners that we need to do a certain amount of build-out. We do have Putnam and Unadilla Township that are not fully connected, and I support their connection. But I do not support the redundant network that the Commissioners are planning to do without connecting the western half of this township. We've got a lot of people in this county, probably slightly over or maybe under 50% that do not have any type of broadband access. And today, that's unconscionable. We've got people that have required schooling, health services, work access, that just do not have access to that. I think our internet service providers have given us a solution as we presented in the previous meeting, and I would like you to support that. And that's basically all I have to say. Thank you again for your service and good evening.
Thank you. Next up will be Dr. Caitlin Perry Dial. If you use your name and location, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Caitlin Perry Dial. I live in the city of Brighton. And I would like to share my comments tonight in that while I am pleased to see the board moving forward on broadband, I do not agree that this resolution is the best way to go. A central trunk line through the county, just as the previous speaker said, does not benefit those on the out, on the outside who currently do not have broadband access. If we're looking at ways to benefit the citizens of our county, I would hope that the board would consider a plan or reconsider a plan that would benefit those in our more, most rural regions, not the ones that are most populated, which is where the trunk line would be going. Secondly, I would like to share my support for a different resolution tonight to accept the funding to, in support of healthcare transportation for lets, as well as the renewed agreement with Whitmore Lake and the purchasing of replacement vehicles for lets. Transportation is a vital element of equity in our community. I know many people who ride it, and they're from all different walks of life. So I'm pleased to see that we are shedding some light on transportation needs within our county. And thank you, that's enough.
Thank you. Next up is Sherry LaRue. State your name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, Sherry LaRue, Green Oak Township. I want to share with you, first of all, the Proverbs in Solomon, the son of David, king of Israel. To know wisdom and instruction, to perceive the words of understanding, to receive the instruction of wisdom, justice, judgment, and equity, to give prudence to the simple, to the young man knowledge and discretion. A wise man will hear and increase learning, and a man of understanding will attain wise counsel. I had a professor, when I was in college, that said something to me, and over the years, I've not been able to attribute it to the famous person that said it. Maybe it was, it just belonged to this man. But he said, "You are who you are because of where you've been." And I've held on to that for many decades, as I try to remain open-minded and open-hearted to the views of other people. And I try not to let my own experiences cloud what they have to say. And I would encourage you as well to take off the lenses of your personal experience as elected officials and listen to what the people who elected you have to say. All of the things that have happened in the last couple of years have affected each person individually. Things that may have happened to you decades ago, younger people with small children in school can't relate to. And so the communication breakdown is, is quite large. And again, I share this with you because I would hope that you would seek wise counsel, that you would search for wisdom, and that you would remember that you are who you are because of where you've been, and so are these people. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you. Lisa, if you state your full name and your township, you'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Are you, are you there, Lisa?
Yeah. I, um, you know, I, I'm.
You need to speak up, we can't hear you.
Oh, hang on. There we go. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Is it, is that better? Okay. I'm so sorry about that. My name is Elisa Davis. I live in the city of Brighton, and thank you so much for hearing me. I just wanted to say that I do stand with Anna Panella and her presentation. And I just come with good news, because I found out yesterday that Fresno, California now has the first class action lawsuit against hospitals for medical overreach. And secondly, the state of North Carolina has now, is now making on nurses, and I believe doctors, accountable for their decisions that are being made medically. I would assume this will soon carry over to health departments and those affiliated with them as well. So this is nothing to play with here. I understand it takes time to hire people. I do that at work. But to expedite this in a very efficient way for the new, for this position opening up, I would, I would implore you to please use your better judgment, listen to what these people are telling you. The legalities are now starting. The ripple effect is beginning. And it appears all those involved in these decisions will have some sort of accountability. So I find it refreshing that people are now being held accountable, and that's really it. So thank you so much for hearing me. Good luck, Anna, and, and thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. Ann Elise, if you state your full name and location, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Ann Elise Pedersen from the soil of Genoa Township. Commissioner Nagari, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, public servants. I wanted to just echo what Elisa had said regarding supporting Anna Panella in her presentation this evening. Many of you are business owners or work for a business, and we know that a good rule of thumb is to hire slow and fire fast. You know, it's, it's great concern that this process wants to be rushed. The replacement for Diane McCormick should not be taken lightly, and we should search for someone that is going to follow not only the Constitution, but also the current Supreme Court ruling that happened in June, West Virginia versus the EPA, which is the Supreme Court ruling. And so that Supreme Court case ruling by executive agency is no longer acceptable. Basically, in a nutshell, it asks whether it's important, asks whether important policies that impact the lives of all Americans should be made by unelected DC bureaucrats or by Congress. The SCOTUS decision that ruling by executive agency is no longer acceptable. So any laws that are on the books that haven't been passed by Congress are void. This includes executive orders and government agency rules. So what does this mean for the people and for your sons and daughters as they're going back to school? That means that the local school boards, the state school board, the Board of Education at the state, the Health Department, the state of Michigan, the Health Department in Livingston County, if they try to push their agendas, or you hire someone that wants to push an agenda that they are going against this Supreme Court ruling, because this case shows that those agencies lack power. They are not, anyone that you hire is not more powerful than the Supreme Court, and they are not more powerful than the people. And you can read this again, that Supreme Court case is West Virginia versus the EPA. And that was just in June of this year, June 30th, I believe, of, of 2022. So again, you know, my recommendation to the board is to hire slow, fire fast. The people have spoken, we've spoken for years now, against the tyrannical overreach. We appreciate the public servants that have supported us in that and upholding the Constitution, and those that haven't. We recommend that you do that, because we do not want to file claims in federal court. And if we are forced, you know, our hand to do that, then we will, but we are giving you an opportunity to cure and do what you need to do as our public servants. You work for us. Thank you.
Thank you. The, I, I see one more hand. I'm going to ask counsel a question here. When we, the rules that we've laid out here, you have to put in a card before you speak, and then they're given to the clerk. My interpretation of raising your hand ahead of the speaking time, is that, do I have the ability to do that?
Well, the board gets to set reasonable rules. I wouldn't say that this is specified. I think that if you allow this person to comment at the second call of the public, that would certainly be appropriate. And I also think your interpretation is appropriate as the chair.
Okay. Even though it's a commissioner, we're going to treat everybody the same. Commissioner Helsnerman, we'll put you in first at the second call to the public. We'll go ahead and close the call to the public and move on to item number seven, which is approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes. We have minutes from a work session dated August 29th. We have meeting minutes from August 22nd, and we have closed session meeting minutes from August 22nd. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes, all the minutes.
I'll move and ask Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Zajak. Any additions or corrections to any of the three sets of minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved. Item number eight is tabled items from previous meetings. We have no tabled items. So we'll move on to item number nine, approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Motion to amend the agenda. I believe that we have, the presentation that Anna Panella has put together with Commissioner Nakagiri, I feel that, I read through the report when it came out, and I was looking for some new information that we haven't had brought before this board over the last couple of years. I didn't find anything new, and so for that reason, I'd like to remove the report from the agenda today.
There's a motion, any discussion from the, on, on the motion? Commissioner Griffith.
I have also read the presentation by Anna. It's very good. Sounds like everyone in the crowd has done that, too. I do know that if there were any questions, I'm sure the chair would allow for any questions pertaining to this report.
That's why we're here to see it. Yep. Let her do it.
Wait, wait, we'll have order here.
You've had order for two and a half years. We're kind of done.
Yeah. Put the video on for whatever.
Any other, Commissioner Griffith, are you, are you done?
No, thank you for the courtesy.
Of any, anybody else? Commissioner Gross.
I am in favor of this motion to change the agenda for the reason that I feel this sets an unprecedented precedence. We have never done anything of this sort before. We've allowed a member of the public to have time during our meeting for a report. We have established rules for call to the public, which everybody is welcome and encouraged to participate. The contents of this report have, we have heard over and over and over for the last two years, and I just feel it's very inappropriate to take up agenda time. That's all I guess, thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
I also read Mrs. Panella's presentation. I thought it was very good, and honestly, I have great empathy for what you and a lot of the parents had to go through. That said.
Let the commissioner speak. This is a meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Yeah. That, that said, that this is the purpose of the call to the public, and we give them a three-minute period at the front end. We give them a two-minute period at the back end. I would encourage her to speak at the call to the public at the, at the end of this meeting.
What are you afraid of? Any?
You know, we have never gotten mad yet, and you're pushing it.
Do we need to call order?
Let's have some order here, or you'll be asked to leave. Anybody else wishing to speak to the motion? Anybody else wishing to speak to the motion?
I'm, I'm going to speak to the motion. Um, the, uh, I did find new information. I'm not sure that, uh, what my colleagues are referring to when they say there's no information. I, it was news to me, the email, um, between LES A and the, um, health officer, um, and questioning the, um, efficacy of the policy. I, I think that, um, allowing, uh, a citizen to speak is not, uh, unprecedented. We, we allow many citizens to speak. We've taken, people from, uh, Michigan Works, AAA 1B, um, the, uh, Huron Clinton Metro Parks, specifically to allow them time to give a more extensive report and to take questions from the Board of Commissioners. So I, I don't see any difference between allowing them time on the agenda to speak about issues that are important to them and a citizen. A citizen has as much rights as these other, um, let's say organizational representatives. The, uh, ability for her to have 10 or 15 minutes to put together the narrative that she knows firsthand, that she experienced, I think is a valuable use of Commissioner time. It places into the record what happened. Uh, I, I have not seen anything that summarizes things as succinctly as Anna Pinella's presentation. I look forward to the opportunity to hear her and to ask her questions. And I, um, would urge my colleagues to, um, allow her to speak.
Anybody else wish to speak? Commissioner Gross?
I'd like to point out that in the instances that the chairman has referenced where representatives from Michigan Works or the Metro Park system, other organizations, there is an affiliation there between those organizations and the county. And, and we are being given updates based upon our representatives' participation
We're affiliated.
in those things. The situation we're dealing here is with a member of the public and it's a different situation.
Commissioners, Ajack?
I thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I'll beg the, uh, audience, I'll call you the audience here. Um, just hold your comments until I get to the end because I think you'll find what I have to say interesting. Um, I'm inclined to let, uh, the, the, the procedure go forward. Uh, I'm quite interested in how future commissioners will deal with this question of who gets to present and who doesn't. Um, I, I've spoken with Ms. Pinella before and I always find her conversations very engaging. My concern, even though as I've said, I'm likely going to, uh, support this, um, uh, discussion to go forward. My concern is the ability to engage in the dialogue that I think is necessary on such a, a, an important topic. Um, because I do, I, I did read some new information in one of my review of the report that I wasn't aware of before, but also in my review of the report, I have concerns with, um, the accuracy of other pieces of information that I would obviously like to engage in the discussion on, which will be, uh, difficult here. Um, but, uh, we'll leave it to the chair to see how that goes. So I'm likely to, to not support the motion as presented, but to support the report. Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'm sorry, can I say one more thing?
Yes.
But that support goes as far as there remains order. I am, as members of the public know, I am a stickler for order in the chambers. And so, um, as I've said, I'm interested in the topic, but I ask that there remains order. Other than the young man, he can say whatever he wants to say with the book. Um, uh, but from everyone else, you know better. So I'm asking that there remain order, um, as we go forward. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Commissioner Drick?
I see no harm in allowing the report to stay on the agenda.
Any further discussion? Um, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Plank.
Uh, hold on a second. Um, Commissioners Ajack wanted to, um, get clarification of the motion.
Commissioner Plank made a motion to amend the agenda to remove the presentation by Anna Pinella. I have a support for that by, um, Commissioner Gross.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader is absent. Commissioner Nakagiri.
No.
Commissioner Helsnerman is absent. Commissioner Drick.
No.
Commissioners Ajack.
No.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
The, Mr., the, um, question for, um, let's have some order in here, please. Thank you for, yes. All right. Um, we will recess till, uh, five after on the clock on the wall. Lost their form. So, um, it was pointed out to me that the motion was to, um, remove, uh, Anna Pinella's report. That, uh, motion passed. Uh, we still need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Motion Smith?
Support Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Plank. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Aye. Agenda is approved. Oh, yes, yes. Um, I'm sorry. Yes, let me, um, uh, Commissioner Gross.
Um, I'd like to, uh, report that several weeks ago, there was a veterans event out at the Fall River Fairgrounds. It was called Vet Fest. And our colleague Doug Hell, Commissioner Doug Helsnerman was there. Um, I did not realize it, but he is a veteran of service from the Korea era, um, or I'm sorry, the Vietnam era. He served in Korea. And so I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Commissioner Helsnerman for his service to our country. And I was happy to see that he attended the Vet Fest. And as a follow on to that, um, several of our, uh, colleagues attended the grand opening of the Veterans Services Office last Thursday evening. I was really, uh, pleased with the new facility and I think, uh, the, uh, team of our veteran services organization is going to be able to do a great job for our county veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Commissioner Smith?
The city of Brighton is, uh, has a ballot initiative. Sorry. The city of Brighton has a ballot initiative to, uh, allow the proliferation of, uh, marijuana dispensaries. And, uh, I just thought I'd throw out a couple statistics here. Uh, there are, uh, many small towns that have allowed this already with populations between 3,000 and 12,000. City of Brighton has roughly 10,000. Coldwater has six stores. Whitmore Lake has three. LaPierre has six. Cedar Springs has five. Calcasca, the smallest of the group, has six. The following cities do not have dispensaries and have voted against it. Plymouth, Northville, South Lyon. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I recommend you clear the room.
Let's just have some, um, civility. We don't, not everybody agrees with the decisions that were made. That's how votes go. I'm. Um, Commissioner Smith, you still have the floor.
There are nearby dispensaries. There are 24 in the Ann Arbor area, six in Ypsilanti, eight in Flint. I urge all the citizens of Brighton to think long and hard whether they want to be known as, uh, you know, Weed City as opposed to a great place to raise a family. Thank you.
Any other commissioners with reports? I want to cover a couple of things. Um, I was talking with counsel. This is just to give, uh, my colleagues a heads up. Uh, many of our resolutions, um, we, um, you know, when I ask for questions, you know, they've been thoroughly vetted in committee. Um, many times, I'd say maybe 80, 90% of the times there are, there's no question. So I was, want to get clarification if we could do a consent agenda like we used to do. The answer is yes. So I just, I'm, I'm just passing that along to my colleagues to contemplate that, uh, anything, any, any single commissioner could remove, uh, items from the consent agenda, just like they've been done in the past for individual discussion and vote. But, uh, anyway, I wanted to share that with my colleagues. There was a email that I, um, uh, see was sent to the commissioners, um, uh, the, the mailbox where we all get forwarded emails from our Metro Parks representative, um, um, Bill Boland regarding, uh, mask mandates that are in place on occasion at Metro Parks, even those that are in Livingston County. So, um, I just wanted to give my colleagues a heads up that, uh, he is asking for a request to, um, give him some support and pushing back against that, uh, mask mandate policy, um, that's being, uh, enacted by, um, Metro Parks. And it does affect Livingston County citizens, its employees of Metro Parks. There are Livingston County employees that, um, could lose their jobs if they don't comply. The last thing I want to mention is, um, uh, really hats off to our Veterans Department, Ramon Baca, our new director. There was a grand opening. Uh, many of our, my colleagues, um, were there, uh, for the grand opening on, uh, Thursday of the, um, new, new Veterans Office. So I appreciate the support. Um, anything further from any commissioners? Go ahead and close the reports and move on to item number 11, which is resolutions for consideration. Um, the first one, um, 2022 dash oh nine dash one three one is a resolution amending resolution, uh, 2022 dash oh eight dash one one two, authorizing a contract with Sparrow Hospital, Department of Pathology to provide medical examiner forensic pathology services and a supplemental appropriation. Is there a motion?
So move Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Plank. And, um, any questions, discussion? Commissioner Drick?
At committee, I spoke against this contract.
At committee, I spoke against this contract because it contains an arbitration clause. And my reasoning in short is that it's never good for the party that doesn't have the information or evidence because there's no discovery in arbitration. There was a request by or to the director to see if the other side would negotiate that. And it came back in an email to me. I think everybody got it, that they were not interested in negotiating that. I know that we're under a time crunch for this also, or at least I, I think that was in the original resolution. Be that as may, it's not in the best interests of the county to have that arbitration clause. Thank you.
Matt, our attorney, if you could address where we're at with the arbitration. Would it be, I asked a question, my colleague, would it be appropriate to table this or is there a time, time requirement on this? Director Faupas, if you could comment on that.
There's absolutely a time crunch. Our contract with University of Michigan for medical examiner services expires on the 19th at midnight. If we don't have a contract in place, then we're going to have to do something. Because we're required by statute to have a medical examiner appointed in place. So we either need to take some action or we're going to have to have a special meeting to take action before the 20th.
Yep. Mr. Norford, if you would, I guess, come up to the table. Yeah, just so that people on Zoom can hear you.
I was just going to suggest, we understand the directive. You could still approve it. And if we can't get that change made, we will just indicate that to you prior to having it prepared for the chair's signature.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? We do have a motion and support. This one requires a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader is absent. Commissioner Naka Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman is absent. Commissioner Drick.
No.
Commissioners Ajax.
Yes.
And Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next resolution, 2022-09-132. It's a resolution authorizing an amendment to the 2022 airport operating budget due to the increased cost of fuel. Is there a motion?
Motion Smith.
Support Drick.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Drick. Are there any follow up questions on this resolution that was discussed in committee previously? Hearing and seeing none, all those, oh, this requires a roll call vote also, sorry.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioners Reader and Helserman are absent. Commissioner Naka Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioners Ajax.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
And Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up is 2022-09-133. It's a resolution, resolution authorizing granting an easement to DTE. Is there a motion?
So move Gross.
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Griffith. Any questions for my colleagues on this one? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The resolution passes. Next up is 2022-09-134. It's a resolution authorizing the reorganization of a veterans benefit counselor position. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioners Ajax, support by Commissioner Gross. This also was reviewed in committee. Any additional questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Resolution passes. Next up is 2022-09-135. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Merit Networks of Ann Arbor, of Ann Arbor, Michigan, and Triple R Consulting of South Lyon, Michigan to perform fiber optic planning and consulting services. Is there a motion?
Move for discussions Ajax.
Support Plank.
Motion by Commissioners Ajax, support by Commissioner Plank. Director Toby.
Great. Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to come in and speak tonight. What you have here is an agreement with Merit Networks and Triple R Consulting for fiber optic consulting services and to help the county to develop an RFP to increase the accuracy of the costing that we have here. Merit Networks is an expert in this area with well over 4,000 miles of fiber optic cabling underneath their belt for management, engineering and services. Triple R is a E-rate expert in the field and has very specific, precise expertise in writing RFPs that assist school districts with obtaining fiber optic cabling systems. So what you have here before you is a resolution that was brought to the FAM committee last Monday night, if I recall. The amended proposal, which you have on your desk here, FAM requested that we bring back a secondary proposal that is, that follows a map of a larger trunk line process. And the merit quote for that is in the packet for you and it is a phased approach. The amounts here, this is a time and materials based quote, our proposal that they have before us. So it is not for $125,000 or $25,000. It is based on the time and the materials that they put into the quote. So it is an authorization to spend up to $850,000 combined between the two, should we decide to proceed with going forward with a trunk line project. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to try and answer them.
Are there any questions for Director Toby? Commissioners Ajax.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Toby, for doing this extra legwork on getting the phase two and phase three numbers in. And I have a couple of questions then. If I'm reading the phase two and phase three descriptions, they seem to match very closely with C and D from the first proposal. Is that right?
That is accurate, sir.
Okay, so we would only incur the time and materials of phase two and phase three if we ultimately decided on a project that included phase two and phase three, right?
That is my understanding of the proposal.
Okay. But in order for this to all work together, is it then the case that A and B include RFPs and project scope and prep and all the other things that are in A and B for the aspects of phase two and phase three?
There are efficiencies and that is accurate.
Okay, so by approving this project, we are saying essentially do A and B for certain with all the phases in mind, that we would have the ability to say continue on to phase two and phase three in the future if the results of A and B made sense to do two and three. Is that right?
That is accurate. There would be additional costs based on the time and materials that they were to put into phase three or phase two and phase three.
Right. But, but the developing of the RFP and the RFP response review portion, that's all. Whether we do face one only or face one, two, and three, we're looking at the same numbers that are shown in A and B.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's an important distinction. It, I think Commissioner Smith brought up the idea last time. I won't speak for him because he can speak for himself. But my recollection was that he was interested, as I was, in understanding, how far do we go without spending and wasting money? And it sounds like A and B, including the concept of phase two and three inside of them, get us in that direction. Do you agree with that?
Yes, but there would be an increase in costs on, on top of the, to do the entire proposal here.
Yeah, if we went, if we decided after A and B that phases one, two, and three made sense, then there's cost for C and D for phase one. There's phase two and phase three costs.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Smith, we've had a number of township supervisors request that we open the purse strings for them to handle this. Have we received any definitive plans? They, they keep referring to things like the last mile and getting it to the consumer. Have we received any definitive plans from any townships that say this is how it's going to be done?
I have not, sir.
I have no other questions. Any other questions or comments for the director? Commissioners Ajax.
Just to piggyback Commissioner Smith, and if we were to do this middle mile, that wouldn't prevent any last miles activities to connect to the middle mile in the future, correct?
That is correct.
This would actually enable that.
And they could pursue their own projects as well, too. And there'll be, there'll be plenty of funding available from the state is what we're hearing.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions before we vote?
Make a motion to amend the prior resolution to include the full scope as presented here, based on the understanding that A and B are the first activities to proceed and that we have future decision points to be made.
Have the amendment restated by the clerk. So we're clear on what she heard and what we're going to vote on.
What I heard is a motion by Commissioners Ajax, a motion to amend to include the full scope.
Support by Commissioner Plank.
Correct. Support by Commissioner Plank.
Okay. Questions, discussion on the amendment? Commissioner Smith?
Just a clarification. So if we approve full scope, the intent is to do A and B. And then if we so decide to move forward, we've already got a preapproval to do the balance. In my understanding, the, the justice of this amendment.
That's my understanding. So that's why I made the amendment. So Director Toby, if you could confirm that.
Based on what the motion was, I would agree with Commissioners Ajax.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gross.
But if we approve this amendment and or approve the resolution, we're basically, and we're talking about the study. We're not starting to lay cable or anything else, correct?
That is correct. We are simply taking this information. We are basically taking the approximate routes. We are going to be applying the pre-engineering, collecting the information that would be necessary for an RFP. We can let an RFP, but we do not have to, we are not bound. We would just let the RFP. And if the board chooses to go forward, we would have options at that point in time. So the first steps are to collect the engineering, the information, put it out for RFP and see what qualifies and see what the actual pricing, considering the variability of the markets right now and the timelines.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome, sir.
Anybody else? I have a question. Director Toby, in the the work that's going to be performed, what, what will be, how, how will it be decided to, whether to do, you know, A and B only or, or the whole thing? How is that going to, how do you envision that working?
Chairman, I'm, I'm seeing this as basically we proceed with A and B and bring that information back to the board for a decision point unless the board chooses to move forward before that is completed.
Okay. Within A and B, would, would I be able to get an understanding if, as you said, just the cost, if we were to decide to just connect Unidilla, is that, will I be able to make that determination from the work that's being done?
I believe we would be able to dial in that, that aspect of it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Let's see, this was, this one requires, well, we're voting on the amendment, so.
Correct.
All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The amendment passes. Now we have an amended resolution. Any further questions, discussion on the amended resolution? This requires a roll call vote.
Commissioners Ajax.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioners Reader and Helserman are absent. Commissioner Naka Gary.
Yes.
And Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
The amended motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. I just want to tip of the hat to our very seasoned and experienced clerk who's busy tonight with a bunch of amendments. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next up is 2022-09-136. It's a resolution authorizing a listing agreement for the sale of two county-owned parcels on land on East Grand River Avenue. Is there a motion?
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Plank, support by Commissioner Griffith, Administrator.
Yes, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I would request maybe that those be amended to a motion to table. We had some issues come up at FAM last week when this was presented. Commissioner Drick outlined some concerns about some of the language on the hold harmless agreement. Talked to our legal counsel about that. That's being looked at now. We just haven't had enough time to revise that correctly yet. So if it's possible, we'd like the board to table this for two weeks from tonight at the next board meeting. We should be able to come back with complete information at that time.
Before asking whether there's support to do or motion to table, because once we do that, there's no more discussion. Is there any other discussion? Any questions? Is there interest on commissioners to table this resolution?
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Gross. All those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. To the next meeting.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next up is 2022-09-137. It's a resolution authorizing the reallocation of funding for the county clerk APEC vital records document management software system project to ARPA. Is there a motion?
So moves Ajax.
Motion by Commissioners Ajax, support by Commissioner Plank. Any questions on this? Commissioner Gross.
I would just like to reiterate my concern and opposition to this resolution. I'm fully in support of, of the system for vital records activity at the clerk's office. This resolution went through committee with some questions. It went to the full board in a revised form and was subsequently approved predicated upon funding it using contingency funds. And I objected to that quite strongly. The resolution was passed by a vote of six to two. Now we have it back and we're moving the expenditure out of contingency and into ARPA. All along, it has been classified as being eligible for ARPA. We probably should have charged it to ARPA to begin with. I just, from an accounting standpoint, I have heartburn with shuffling it around from one area to another. And on that basis, I plan to vote no on this resolution.
Any other discussion questions from commissioners? The, this one also requires a roll call.
Commissioner Ajax.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
No.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioners Reader and Helserman are absent. Commissioner. Commissioners Reader and Helserman are absent. Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
And Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up is 2022-09-138. It's a resolution authorizing the reallocation of funding from IT to ARPA for access interactive backup, storage, logging system and systems and three years of support and maintenance. Is there a motion?
So moved Ajax.
Motion by Commissioners Ajax, support by Commissioner Plank. Any questions, discussion? This one also requires a roll call vote.
Commissioners Ajax.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioners Reader and Helserman are absent. Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
And Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
If, if, I would ask the people in the lobby if they could be a little bit quieter. We can't close the doors in a public meeting and it would be great if, if we could all hear what's going on here. Next, next up is 2022-09-. Let's see, I've lost my place here.
139.
139. It's a resolution amending Resolution 2022-07-099 authorizing fiscal year 2023 vehicle replacements leased through the county's partnership with Enterprise Fleet Management. Is there a motion?
Motion, Smith.
Support Ajax.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Ajax. This was reviewed in committee. Asked my colleagues if they had further questions, follow up. We have our Director of Letts here with us. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. Next up is 2022-09-140. It's a resolution authorizing an increase in the total authorized vehicles for the Sheriff's Office Field Services Division for additional deputies. Is there a motion?
Support, Smith.
Motion by Commissioner Plank, support by Commissioner Smith. Questions, comments from Commissioners? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The resolution passes. Next up is 2022-09-141. It's a resolution to accept funding from Trinity Health, Ascension Providence, and Michigan Medicine to support the healthcare transportation collaborative services. Is there a motion?
So moved Griffith.
Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Gross. Any follow-up questions or comments on this resolution? Uh, he, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. 2022-09-142. It's a resolution authorizing sub-recipient agreement for transportation services between Livingston County Letts and Peoples Express of Whitmore Lake for fiscal year 2023. Is there a motion?
So moved Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Plank. Any further discussion, questions, follow up? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. The last resolution of the evening, 2022-09-143. The resolution amending Resolution 2021-03-033 authorizing revised capital expenditure for the purchase of six replacement buses. Is there a motion?
Motion, Smith.
Support Ajax.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Ajax. Any further questions or discussion on this resolution? This was covered in committee. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioners Reader and Helserman are absent. Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioners Ajax.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
And Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We, item number 12, we have accounts payable reports. I'm going to ask for motion to pay both the claims dated on September 12th, 2022, and the payables dated August 13th through September 2nd. Is there a motion to pay both?
Motion to approve both.
Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Gross. Any discussion, questions? Uh, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Uh, thank you. Paid the bills. Item number 13 on the agenda is the second call to the public. I would remind the public that there's, this is two minutes in duration. Would also remind the public, if you have comments specifically for the board, as the chairman of the board, that you are Roberts rules directs you to direct your questions, comments, anger towards the chairman of the board. So I would appreciate your following Roberts rules. Is there, are there people that wish to speak at the second call of the public?
Yes, there are. Commissioners Ajax.
Uh, yes.
Two minutes. I would like to, there wasn't really a formal place in this agenda, and I didn't want to give a tip to our clerk because she sees all the agenda items, but I did want to make recognition of our esteemed clerk, who was recognized this year as the 2022 County Clerk of the Year.
Thank you.
I believe last weekend or the weekend before, she attended the 114th Annual Conference in Grand Traverse. Um, and I don't think she knew she was going to win. I think she, as part of her duties, was attending the conference and was quite surprised when her name was called and she had to come up to accept this award. So I believe it was also Supreme Court Justice Zara that presented the award, if I'm not mistaken.
No, he didn't present. That actually came from the Ottawa County Clerk, but I have been appointed to a commission by Justice Sahara.
Okay, so she, even better. She didn't just get the award from him, but she was put to work by him. So I, I think it's just important, we recognize there's a lot of, there's a lot of concern with different activities that the clerks are charged with, and, and I for one am, am grateful for our county clerk and to be recognized amongst her peers as the Clerk of the Year, I think speaks volumes. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I'm just going to go in the order I have. Lisa was I, I struggle with this. I'm sorry, dear. Was Martowich. Thank you.
Her name is Anna Penella. She lives in Brighton Township with her husband and four children. Like many children in our state, her children's education was interrupted and denied by the overreach of state and local power during the COVID-19 pandemic. This overreach consisted of the Livingston County Health Department issuing mandatory quarantine directives without issuance of a public health order as required by law. Once the impact of this overreach hit my home, I recognize the importance of taking a stand. It's imperative to understand what occurred so that it never is repeated. If this understanding doesn't take place, we will find ourselves in a similar circumstance in the next pandemic. My goal is to educate our community, to protect not only her children, but all of our students in our county from the potential recurrence. What started out as protective measure quickly turned into a grave injustice, snubbing the fundamental rights of due process and First Amendment protections as well as rights to education. Throughout the presentation, we will provide you with an understanding how the local health department in partnership with local schools wrongly denied education to thousands of students in our county by ignoring the laws that are meant to protect the people from the government, not the government from the people. On May 5th, 2021, MDHHS advised that enforcement of MDHHS school quarantine guidelines must be thereafter by a local health department order. The state directive was acknowledged by Washington County Health Department order dated May 13th, 2021. The Livingston County Health Department and Washington County Health Department have the same medical director, advice and direction that's shared between both county health departments. WCHD issued their public health order on May 13th. LCHD never issued a single public order. On Wednesday, June 9th, 2021, an email from the Livingston County Health Department stated that at this time, LCHD had not issued any public health orders regarding face masks, quarantine, and testing of school-aged children in Livingston County schools.
That would be a good place to pause, cuz.
Craig Drellis, Tyrone Township.
Uh, Mr. Commissioner, what I don't understand is how a citizen can have a presentation or talking points presented on an agenda for the Commissioners only to be purged by a premeditated Roberts rule maneuver conducted by a Commissioner that's lost her primary election. I find that totally repugnant. You know, I would like an understanding of how that would, how that item that got put on, placed on the agenda was, was purged. I understand Roberts rules, but I don't understand how a presentation got on an agenda and was purged by Roberts rules. Thank you.
Elizabeth Bonner, Oseola Township.
At this time, Livingston County Health Department has not issued any public health orders regarding face mask quarantine and testing of school-aged children in Livingston County schools. Both of the FOIA responses came after the new advice was given by MDHHS to local health departments. These responses acknowledged that LCHD had not issued quarantine orders. Yet, many students were given repeated and even consecutive quarantine directives with no due process. These mandatory quarantine directives resulted in a deprivation of education of 10 to 14 days each time, along with depravations of other rights. All of the mandatory quarantine directives for the entire school year of 2021-22 were unlawful by the Livingston County Health Department. This impacted the education of every student in Livingston County's five school districts. On, on September 21, 2021, four months after the May 5th, 2021 transfer of power from state to local control, I was notified via an email from the school that my daughter would not be able to attend school. We were informed she had she would have to quarantine. Uh, Scranton, close contact to positive COVID case. I regretfully report to you that today, the Livingston County Health Department in collaboration with SMS had determined you, your child as a close contact to a confirmed COVID case. After being notified by the school, I received a similar notification from LCHD the following day. The LCHD email says that my daughter must quarantine at home. This isn't a suggestion. This is a mandatory directive to quarantine. And the health department may not, so you're saying they may not attend school or be at home. Am I done?
Your, your time is up, yes.
And it's really.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Shame, 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 shame.
Stephanie Johnson, Hamburg Township.
It explains home quarantine means your student should not leave your house except to seek medical care. Exceptions include natural disasters such as a house fire or flood during which you should wear a face mask while you are out of the house. See next page, it says, this means she cannot attend church too, denying her the freedom of religion. I save screenshots of this information because once you get outside of the dated quarantine timeframe, the information disappears conveniently and you can no longer see the information from the LCHD. Another note of interest, if you are vaccinated and provided documentation, quarantines were not required. Discrimination based on vaccine status. According to MCL 333.5203, the issuance of this quarantine directive is invalid. It clearly states in our state law that the health department notice shall be individual and specific, not cookie cutter with the same notification going to thousands of students. The law also states that a written warning notice shall be served either by registered mail, return receipt requested, or personally by an individual who is employed by or under contract to the department or a local health department. I understand that the job seemed insurmountable to do this the legal way, but the health department cannot simply ignore laws. The law is in place for a reason, or so we thought. MCL 333.5203 goes on to say that if the warning notice isn't adhered to, the health department shall seek an order from probate court and that the individual whom receives the warning has the right note, right to notice and a hearing before the court issues another. None of this happened. We did not receive in-person delivery or a notice by registered mail. These statutory requirements were ignored by LCHD. MCL 333-5205 states that if an individual does not comply with an order, then the health department has the right to further pursue the infectious person. Although in order to pursue this person, many legal rights are afforded to the accused first. This is due process. This was denied the entire time.
Jessica Bearfield from Putnam Township, followed by Jennifer Smith.
Hi, guys. Public Health Code MCL 333.5207 addresses the protection of public health in an emergency. But in order to enforce it, an affidavit is required by the local health officer. The law requires that if an affidavit is served, proof of the danger to society must be provable, not just speculative. And the individual will have the right to a hearing. At this hearing, we would have had a right to an attorney and the ability to present and cross-examine witnesses. Due process protections again were denied. No one could challenge the findings that their child had been exposed to someone sick with COVID. As a parent of four children impacted by quarantines, I decided I had had enough and that I wasn't going to just follow along. I sent the following email to my child's school in response to the quarantine directive excluding her from school and confining her to home. I told the school that my daughter was not sick and that she would be attending school and extracurricular activities. Mrs. Hiller, thank you for your information. I appreciate your concern for my daughter. However, I am her mother. I will determine if she is sick. She is not. She will be attending school tomorrow along with her extracurricular activities. My child will not be denied her education due to the idea that she may get sick. She takes risks every day. Some are more dangerous than others. This is ridiculous. We will not comply with this. How do I even know when my child was in contact with this person, whoever it is? Somehow, it is okay to protect the sick child's identity, but my child loses her right to determine if she was even near this mystery, mystery person. There is no law that says that I need to provide any medical information to my child to attend school. Enough is enough. If my child is sick, I will keep her home based on common sense. And as I have done for her, for her entire life. If she is not sick, she will be in school. See you tomorrow. Thank you. Alan Anna Penella.
Jennifer Smith from Genoa Township, followed by Danielle Anjo.
Hi, Commissioners. I trust my friends are going to be able to get through Anna's presentation, and I think that you should not get away scot-free by everyone just reading a form. Your behavior tonight was appalling. And what you're afraid of is the truth and facts. Those of you on the left side, ironically, of this board, your behavior shows that you've declared war on parents in Livingston County. You're trying to not only silence what happened as it is factually presented, not from an emotional standpoint, from a factual standpoint, you don't want it presented. But you don't want this to look bad on the county. And a criminal isn't a criminal when the crime is hidden. It doesn't get hidden and then the crime goes away. A criminal is still a criminal if the crime was committed. So your behavior tonight is beyond appalling and it, it is not going to be ignored. So with that, I just want to say to you that I thought you were all from the same party because you all have been begging us for our votes. But clearly you're not. And it will not be forgotten. So I want to end with this quote. Government is instituted for the common goal for the protection, safety, prosperity, and happiness of the people and. for the protection, safety, prosperity, and happiness of the people, and not for the profit, honor, or private interests of any man, family, or class of men. Therefore, the people alone have an incontestable, unalienable, and indefeasible right to institute government and to reform, alter, or totally change the same when the protection, safety, and prosperity and happiness require it. See you November eighth.
Danielle Anjo from Handy Township, followed by Madeline Thomas.
Hey, thanks for calling your minion up to order me. Although I did ask him questions and he wasn't able to answer them on camera, so that's kind of, I don't know. I'll go ahead and try and finish off this speech since you were so kindly to remove it from the agenda. I brought my daughter to school the next day, and she was denied entry. I asked him to show me the school policy that says she isn't able to attend because she might get sick. I was told that they didn't have one. I further inquired with the district superintendent about the MCL code they were using to enforce quarantine. He responded that quarantine orders are not issued by schools. I assume that you guys have this, where it's their email by Matt Outlaw, quarantines are not issued by schools. Through a FOIA request, it is clear that even the superintendent of LES A was fighting for the quarantine nonsense to stop. In the email, Superintendent Hubert references a conversation he had with Diane McCormick about the negative impacts of quarantine. He was basically begging the Health Department to make it stop. There's a highlighted part, and it says, thank you for your time. This morning, discussing the negative impact the current quarantine guidelines have on the educational opportunity for students in Livingston County. Diane McCormick then acknowledged in her response that the benefits to quarantine are not effective, and knows that there is a low positivity rate of approximately two percent of sixty seven hundred students quarantined through September thirtieth. This email is from October fourth, two thousand and twenty one. Quarantine directives continue through the new year of two thousand and twenty two for three more months after the Health Director herself stated her knowledge of the quarantine ineffectiveness. Why did this continue, and for whose benefit? Definitely not the children of our county. And this is another email based upon low positivity rate, but so this is just stating what was just there.
Next. Madeline Thomas, Brighton Township, followed by Mary Beth Patricus.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your attention. All right. A big, once the Health Directors in County Superintendent's feet were held to the fire, they stopped colluding in their unlawful behavior. I missed a sentence earlier. It took a threatened lawsuit paid for by concerned citizens of this county, which required fifteen thousand dollars to hire an attorney to stop quarantine directives from being issued in Livingston County. Okay, first, Livingston County Health Department is issuing quarantine orders to children and families without complying with requirements of state law. It is apparent that Livingston County Health Department is misrepresenting voluntary quarantine requests as valid and enforceable quarantine orders. However, these pseudo quarantine orders are being illegally enforced by the school districts. Suits in other counties recognize there was, in fact, a denial of due process to students by health officials in those counties. See Circuit Court orders from Branch and Sheboygan Counties. Okay, the plaintiffs have established by affidavit and verified complaint. I don't quite, cannot quite see this. I'll finish this part. Continued loss of a person's education and educational opportunities afforded within the public school system. Okay. Finally, here's an example of the way quarantine directives were given in Alleghan County, Michigan. Each of the MCLs that were referenced previously, all are mentioned in the warning notice. I leave this to the next person.
Thank you. Before the next person starts, I would ask Commissioners to cease from tapping the dais. It's distracting to me.
Mary Beth Patricus from Brighton Township, followed by Alina Anderson.
Endless opinions can be given regarding necessity of the warning notice, but the one thing that this notice preserves is the due process rights of the citizens. It is grounded in the law. LCHD never issued a valid public health order, but acted as though there was one. Thousands of young citizens were denied due process and their education. It is imperative that the members of the County Commission exert the powers they have to better oversee the LCHD. It is also imperative that we find a Health Director that is going to follow the law. What happened to our children for a year and a half was unethical and unlawful. We need to ensure that this is never repeated, and that goes with not having a plumber as the new Health Director. Thank you for your time.
Alina Anderson, Oceola, followed by Colleen Quinn.
Well, since Anna's report is through, and I'm glad you had to sit through it and listen to it, all four of you, how disappointing. I've spoke at Commissioner meetings before. I too have four children. I'm not sure if you have children, grandchildren. But this, I hope you read it and took it to heart. These are facts. This happened to all Livingston County families, parents, and children. And for you to withhold that from the community of Livingston County is disheartening, and it's tragic. So again, I stand with these people. I'm glad to see you all go. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Colleen Quinn, followed by Tim Quinn from Genoa Township.
Since we made it through the report, I just want to say I stand with these people. I am not fortunate enough to have children. If I did, you wouldn't want to see my reaction to all of this, honestly. And the fact that we, you have dragged this out and dragged this out is disgusting. It's not a good use of resources. You need to make a decision. I know you have some good candidates. I met one of them this evening. Get on with it, and suffice it to say, no one's going for a quarantine ever, ever again.
Tim Quinn from Genoa Township, followed by Pamela Beach.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think what we witnessed tonight is a lesson in humility. And I don't know who should be humbled. You know, you come to different meetings, and you tell us how well-educated you are. You tell us about your successful businesses. But you don't listen to the people. We've been coming here for months, asking you to pay attention, and we give you good reason. I don't understand. I really don't understand. You can have all the education in the world, but if you don't put it to good use, what are you doing? Who's gaining from your knowledge? You're not sharing it. Some of you should be ashamed. Maybe we should be ashamed for not coming forward sooner. I don't know the answer. I think you do. Don't ask for support if you're not going to do what you say you're going to do. Thank you.
Howell City, followed by Mark Fosdick.
Hi, I just, I, I just had a few things I wanted to read to talk about. What's really important? We're in a battle in this country between liberty and tyranny. We are in a constitutional republic, not a democracy. I'm tired of hearing people mistake what, what form of government we have. What is the difference? The difference is that our government is a representative government, meaning the we, the people, give the power to those who represent us to govern. But don't be mistaken. They do not have absolute power. There is a small word, word that cannot be forgotten, consent. If there is no consent of the governed, you do not have power. We, the people, also have the power to change government if our representatives are not representing us in a way that they promised to represent us. A word of caution where it comes to the next Medical Director or LCHHS, we will not have our constitutional rights trampled on ever again. We will not consent to masking, quarantine, closing of businesses, or forced vaccinations. If I had a child in school during two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty one, I would be suing the school. I would be suing the Health Department, School Board, and businesses for deprivation of rights under, under color of the law. And just walking away from this a little bit, I just found out how devastating it really was to some of these kids that really lost their education. They've got to go back, these working parents that work forty hours a week, and single parents trying to get their kids back and forth to school. They have to still go to work, try to find ways for their kids, and their kids lost their whole education. Now they got to figure out how they're going to get them to school and relearn, reteach them a year and a half of education.
Your time is up. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mark Fosdick, Tohakta Township, followed by Anna Pinella.
Mark Fosdick, Tohakta Township Supervisor. Boy, how do you follow all these comments? This dialogue is what makes our country great. We can voice differences of opinion, and we don't have to worry about someone coming to arrest us or some thug coming to our house to beat us up. I would like to say, though, in regard to Resolution one thirty five, through the ARPA request that the administration did request, there was approximately ten point seven million dollars requested by the townships to build out broadband for unserved and underserved residents within the county. Two internet service providers, and you saw the maps, were willing to contribute between the both, the two of them, over twelve million dollars to make this project work. I, I don't, I see this as a win-win overall for, you know, the county and for those people that don't have broadband internet. We're seeking sort of a grant program, but you guys have to instruct the IT and the administration to let's flesh out what would this grant program look like? You know, what areas would be served? What would be the cost? What redundancies could these providers put into that system to make, you know, to meet the needs that the county is looking at, especially in Putnam and New Nigella Township? And that's all I wanted. Oh, yeah, one other thing. Parts A and B, Phase two and three, I didn't see that in any of your information, but you seem to have based your opinion or decision on that information. How can you get that information to know? I was surprised that it wasn't in the packet, but everything else was. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the last card I have is Anna Pinella, Brighton Township.
Commissioners, I was disappointed to not get to share my entire report tonight, although I do appreciate everybody in the room helping me out. I hope everyone had an opportunity to read it and understand it. I think there was plenty of thing, there were plenty of things in this report that I believe were not known to the general public, which I don't think should be kept under wraps for any reason. It's disappointing to not be able to have a dialogue. I understand that we have these calls to the publics, which, which are helpful, but where's the dialogue? It would be helpful to be able to communicate. There's nothing more important to me and to many of the people in this room in the stage that I'm in, and I'm guessing always than my children. And there is also no better authority on what's good for my children than me, myself and my husband. So I feel like one piece of advice that I hope everyone can take from this evening, and hopefully from my report, is that if you get to the point where you're not sure who, you know, this one group of experts say this, one group of experts say this, I can assure you, parents are experts on their children. So please, in the future, listen to the parents. We're, I'm not going to do something to harm my child, and my child is, is mine, that they were given to me by God. So I hope that everyone understands that you cannot go wrong if you follow your gut and allow parents to do what's right for their kids. What happened with Diane McCormick and the Livingston County Health Department is a tragedy. I think it's very important for everyone to understand how unlawful that was in order to find the right person to appoint for the position moving forward. So hopefully, you can make a good choice. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So that will close Call the Public Here in Person, and then I see three hands up. So the last person that will be called on would be Janine Iyer. First up in the Zoom, Call the Public, Connie Robinson. If you state your full name and your township, you'll have two minutes.
Yes, my name is Connie Robinson, and I am from Heartland Township. I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I just wanted to say I a hundred percent agree with Commissioner Nakagiri. Presentations should not be limited to individuals representing organizations. Anna Pinella is a constituent and should have just as much of a right to make a presentation as anyone else. And frankly, you should be glad the public is interested and engaged in their community. I actually find what happened tonight beyond disappointing, really. And while maybe you did hear much of this information before, no one has ever taken the time to put together a PowerPoint presentation. She, that took time and effort only to have board members deny her. And since this was her firsthand experience of what happened to her four children, Anna's presentation should have been welcomed by all Commissioners. And seeing that the county will be replacing the Medical Director for the Livingston County Health Department, I would think any additional information would be welcome. Seriously, seriously. What happened here tonight was shameful, and that's all I got.
Leo Hanafin, if you state your full, your name and your township, you'll have two minutes.
Yes, my name is Leo Hanafin. I'm from Brighton Township. My daughter's a teacher. She, she had to guide her children through three different lesson, lesson assignments, and to develop her own ability to teach online and to deliver to thirty students in a different school system. I understand the challenges through her and through my life as an educator. But I'm also a senior. I lost friends in COVID when things were uncertain, when, when we're all very afraid. And I want to thank Diane McCormick for trying to protect us because the spread of the virus led to a million Americans dying. It still leads to three hundred and forty-five Americans dying every day. If this were an airplane crashing with three hundred and forty-five people on it, they would stop the airline system. So I don't think that, in all due respect, that, that parents without medical knowledge or Commissioners without medical knowledge should be directing the Health Director for our county on public health issues. We need to find a professional who knows their science and their medicine, follows the science and medicine. Masks worked. Quarantines.
Order, come on.
They kept many, pardon me?
Sorry, I was trying to get people to quiet down. Go ahead.
And, and so I think we need to balance. And, and so I think we need to balance this. If seniors' lives don't count, that's fine. Let's worry about the kids' education. Kids will recover with love from their teachers and guidance from, guidance from their teachers, love from their parents, but the people that died won't recover. Let's balance the whole situation and let science and medicine guide what we do.
Thank you. Janine, if you state your name and township, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Um, just as a comment to the Chair, Chairman West, it's my opinion that it's not the job of the health department to protect us. Masks didn't work and quarantines didn't work either. They just damaged children and put them behind in their schooling. Tonight we have learned some things. We learned that, we, we learned the struggle that parents had to gain their children's lawful right to education was denied. And that's something that is a travesty and that should never happen again. And the appointment of the next health officer, it is, you know, that's why it's so important to have an external search and get, have, you know, a pool of qualified candidates to choose from that won't bend to poor policy. We also learned tonight that the people will not be silenced, even though four Commissioners voted to, to throw out Anna's presentation. You still had to sit through it and that's, that's what, you know, that should have happened in the beginning of the meeting. I think it's shameful. You know, I just feel like those who, who did that don't deserve to sit in the seat that they're sitting in. And I want to thank Chairman West Nakagiri for attempting to allow Anna to tell her story. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. We'll close the Zoom call to public and I, I'm gonna, I didn't get a chance to speak. I, I'm going to speak for a couple of minutes and I thank you for bearing with me. You'll start the timer. Um, one of the Commissioners who voted, you know, to squash the presentation said in a side conversation, you know, didn't want to take the time to, it was a waste of time. I, I think that's appalling. And it actually took longer time to, to cycle through the presentation than it would have had we, had Ms. Panella been allowed to speak in one fell swoop. The, all is not for, all is not for not though, because the Ms. Panella's presentation is in the minutes of the meeting. It'll be there in, into perpetuity. People will know what happened from the perspective of a parent and with firsthand knowledge. And they'll also remember how some on this board denied her a chance to share her direct story and field questions if you had, if Commissioners had questions. It is appalling. It's appalling to me. It's embarrassing to me. The, the last thing I'd say is it's important to understand who you're voting for. And I would urge all of you to Google Ottawa Impact. Remember Ottawa Impact? Because Ottawa Impact was an organization of citizens who were fed up in Ottawa County with their Board of Commissioners. They ousted, there was 11 Commissioners in Ottawa County. They ousted eight of them over this COVID-related crap. And it, it, so I'm just telling you this because it can be done, the people can be heard. And it's, I, I encourage you to stay engaged. This is disappointing what happened today, but don't go away. Stay engaged. Thank you very much.
With that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn. So moved.
All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Were adjourned.